Good morning and welcome to today's New York Council hearing on zoning and franchises. If you wish to submit a testimony, you may at testimony@council.nyc.gov. At this time, please silence all electronic devices and thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Thank you, Sergeant. Good morning and welcome to a meeting of the Subcommittee of Zoning and Franchises. I am Councilmember Kevin Riley, Chair of the Subcommittee. This morning, I'm joined by my colleagues Chair Lewis, Councilmember Shulman, and we're joined virtually by Councilmember Hanks. Today, we will hold public hearings for four rezoning proposals. Three in Queens for 78-46 Metropolitan Ave., 79-18 164th St., and 40-25 Crescent St., and one in Brooklyn for 9th St. I would also like to note that the 2080 McDonald Avenue proposal originally planned for vote for today will be voted at a future date. Before we begin, I recognize the Subcommittee Council to review the hearing procedures.
Thank you, Chair Riley. I am Angelina Martinez, Review Council to the Subcommittee. This meeting is being held in hybrid format. Members of the Subcommittee are required to meet in person. Members of the public who wish to testify may testify in person or via Zoom. Members of the public wishing to testify remotely were asked to register for today's hearing. If you wish to testify and have not already registered, please do so now by visiting the New York City Council website at www.council.nyc.gov/landuse to sign up. Or for those of you here in the chambers, please see one of the sergeants at arms to prepare and submit a speaker card. Members of the public may also view a live stream broadcast of this meeting at the Council's website. If you need an accessible version of any of the presentations shown today, please send an email request to landus testimony@council.nyc.gov. When called to testify, individuals appearing before the Subcommittee will remain muted until recognized by the Chair to speak. Applicant teams will be recognized as a group and called first, followed by members of the public. When the Chair or I recognize you, if you are joining us remotely, your microphone will be unmuted. Please take a moment to check your device and confirm that your mic is on before you begin speaking. Public testimony for this hearing will be limited to two minutes per witness. If you have additional testimony you would like the Subcommittee to consider, if you have written testimony you would like to submit, instead of appearing here before the Subcommittee, you may email it to landus testimony@council.nyc.gov. Please indicate the LU number and/or project name in the subject line of your email. Witnesses joining us remotely are requested to remain in the meeting until excused by the Chair, as Councilmembers may have questions. Finally, there will be pauses over the course of this hybrid meeting for various technical reasons, and we ask that you please be patient as we work through any issues. Chair Riley will now continue with today's agenda items.
Thank you, Council. To begin today's meeting, I will now open the public hearing on the preconsiders LU related to ULP number C-220133ZMQ relating to the 78-46 Metropolitan Avenue rezoning proposal in Councilmember Holden's district in Queens. This application seeks a zoning map amendment to rezone the existing R5 zoning district to an R5D/C2-3 district. For anyone wishing to testify on this item, if you have not already done so, you must register online. You may do that now by visiting the Council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. Council, please call the first panel for this item.
The first panel for this item, and Richard, let me know if I'm missing anyone. Richard Lobell, Amanda Ionati, Kevin Williams, Spire Dom Bosigos, and Robert Thomas.
Council, please administer the affirmation.
Panelists, can you please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the Subcommittee and in your answer to all Councilmember questions?
I do.
I do.
Thank you. For the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landus testimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, I'll just ask that you please reinstate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Thank you, Chair Riley. Members of the Subcommittee, good morning. Richard Lobell of Sheldon Lobell, PC for the applicant for the 78-46 Metropolitan Avenue rezoning. This is a very straightforward rezoning of two lots along Metropolitan Avenue. I will go through the presentation materials, and then the entire applicant team is available to answer any questions. Next slide. So a summary of the proposed rezoning. This is a zoning map amendment to rezone 78-46 and 44 Metropolitan Avenue from an existing R5 zoning district to an R5D/C23 zoning district. What would this affect? This would allow for the enlargement of this existing one-story building at 78-46 Metropolitan Avenue. This is currently an existing Use Group 6 veterinary office. What the rezoning would allow would be for the expansion of the building to accommodate two residential floors, and this would allow for members of staff of the veterinary practice to remain on site, as had been a longstanding goal of the owner. This would result in a total floor area of roughly 5,000 square feet, including approximately 2,500 square feet of residential use and 2,400 square feet of commercial use. This rezoning would also bring an adjacent property that has an existing non-conforming ground floor commercial use into conformance. So, if we could have the next slide, please. As you can see from the zoning map, a little bit hard to see, but will be clearer later on, the zoning map demonstrates that there are existing commercial overlays existing over roughly six blocks to the east, northeast, north, northwest, and west of the subject blocks. So, this area along Metropolitan Avenue is well-versed with regards to commercial overlays, and this proposed commercial overlay, in addition to the R5D district, would permit these two buildings to come into conformance, which is a goal of many rezoning applications. Next slide. Next slide is a tax map, which demonstrates the minimal nature of this rezoning. Again, the development site is highlighted in red. The entirety of the rezoning area is highlighted in the dotted lines. This involves these two lots, roughly 5,000 square feet in total. Next slide. The next slide is a land use map, which demonstrates well why this rezoning is merited. You can see here Metropolitan Avenue is a 100-foot wide street. This is considered to be a major thoroughfare and a wide street per zoning in this area. You can see from the orange and red colorations on the map that this is an area where there are many commercial ground floor uses, including general retail, banks, eating and drinking establishments, and other uses accessory to the surrounding residences. The veterinary practice itself has been there for over 30 years. It is a heavily utilized practice in the area, and so, this was recognized by the Community Board as being a meritorious rezoning, given the fact that the request here is modest and the use here is important to the area. To further note, the existing R5 districts here with community facility floor area would allow for a building at a 2FAR, or in our case, 5,000 square feet. So this is really less about the overall bulk of the building, which would not be affected pursuant to that zoning change, but would allow for the proposed residential use on top of the existing veterinary practice and would make this practice a conforming commercial use. The next several slides show pictures, photos of the building and the surrounding area. I would invite the Council land use staff to page through those pictures quickly, so as not to take up too much of the Council's time. I think the last slide with pictures, you want to scroll through the pictures? The last slide with pictures is a picture of the one-story commercial building. You can see that on the left, and the adjacent three-story existing building on the right, which would also be included in the rezoning. That building, our building, would be much the same as that building at that three-story level. We're actually setting back the residential so as not to affect those windows at the front of the property to the side of us. After the pictures, if you want to scroll through, there are plans, which we've included. Again, very straightforward. You've got the existing one-story commercial veterinary practice on the ground floor, and then you can see, as you page through, the two setback residential stories on top. Zoning calculations and such, feel free to page through the plans. This is a site plan. There is the existing first floor, and here's the proposed second story, and followed by the proposed third floor plan, with a roof plan and sections that follow. So, that really is the sum total of the rezoning. We received unanimous approval from Queens Community Board 5, as well as an approval of the Queens Borough President, and we hope that the Council will support what we view to be meritorious application, which will allow for a local longstanding commercial practitioner to remain at this location. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Richard. Just want to state for the record, we've been joined by Councilmember Botcher. I just have a couple of questions, and I'll pass it over to my colleagues to see if they have any questions. Number one, the Queens Community Board, number five, unanimously approved this project with one condition: that the two-story residential addition should not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Can you discuss how you propose projects meet the Community Board's recommendation?
Sure. So, Queens Community Board 5, and we've been in front of them numerous times, was very generous to us with regards to this application. They recognized that Dr. Thomas is a longstanding stakeholder in the community, and they essentially asked that the building that we built somewhat reflect the context of the area, and we're happy to agree with that. We asserted so at the Community Board. Dr. Thomas, who will remain in the building and keep his practice in the building, has every intention of maintaining a well-designed building at the site. What we proposed to the area was, what you see, a largely brick building, in addition to which, on a voluntary basis, we set back the residential stories so as not to take up that Metropolitan Avenue frontage. They're set back and are somewhat contextual. So, there was no issue with regards to maintaining the character of the neighborhood, and in fact, the rezoning in recognizing this existing longstanding commercial use actually does reflect the character of Metropolitan Avenue here, which is largely commercial on the ground floor.
Thank you, Richard. The Borough President requested that the applicant consider using sustainable building materials and energy systems. Could you confirm what resilient and sustainable building features is your team committed to incorporate in this building?
Sure. You know, this is a rather small project, so I think we're going to use such materials and measures to the extent practical. I don't know, is Spiro, the project architect, is on? If you just want to, would just address that very briefly, are you available?
Yes, I am. You all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. One of the requirements are that we have this local law now into effect with green roofs, and we will certainly comply with any of those local laws when we get into the weeds of the building construction documents that will be presented to the Building Department. So, that's, in effect, a good measure of sustainability they'll be using. You know, on the interiors, we plan on using perhaps recycled flooring or bamboo flooring. We'd like to use low VOC paints, things of that nature, to be as sustainable as possible for this type of project.
Thank you. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for this applicant panel? There being no future questions, this applicant panel is excused. Council, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on 78-46 Metropolitan Avenue proposal?
Chair, let me double-check again. If there's anyone here in person wishing to testify on this item, please see one of the sergeants to file a slip. Sorry. Chair, there are no members of the public here to testify remotely on this item.
There being no members of, excuse me, there being no members of the public who wish to testify on preconsiders LU's relating to ULP number C-220133ZMQ relating to the 78-46 Metropolitan Avenue rezoning proposal. The public hearing is now closed, and the item is laid over. Thank you, Council. To continue with today's meeting, I will now open the public hearing on the preconsiders LU relating to ULP number C-220414ZMK relating to 79-18 164th Avenue rezoning proposal in Councilmember Gennaro's district in Queens. This application seeks a zoning map amendment to map a C2-3 overlay within existing R4/C1-3 and an R5D/C1-3 zoning districts. For anyone wishing to testify on this item remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the Council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. For anyone here in person wishing to testify, please see one of the sergeant at arms to prepare and submit a speaker's card. Council, please call the first panel for this item.
The panel for this item, and again, Richard, if I'm missing anyone, let me know, is Richard Lobell, Amanda Ionati, Kevin Williams, Mikhail Kantius, and Victor Filetti.
Council, I believe that Victor Filetti may not be in attendance, so the remainder of the list is correct.
Okay, thanks, Richard.
Council, please administer the affirmation.
So, for Richard, Amanda, and Kevin, just to remind that you're still under oath. And for Mikhail Kantius, sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name, can you please raise your right hand and answer my question? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the Subcommittee and in your answer to all Councilmember questions? Can we unmute him so he can reply?
Yes.
Thank you. For the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landus testimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, I'll just ask that you please reinstate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Thank you, Chair Riley. Councilmembers, good morning again. Richard Lobell of Sheldon Lobell, PC for Dr. Mikhail Kantius, the applicant. We are pleased to bring the 79-18 164th Street rezoning to you today, which would be a commercial overlay rezoning with no change in the underlying residential district. So this is a very straightforward rezoning, which would merely change the underlying districts from C1 to C2 districts. Next slide. So with specificity, the project summary is that there are roughly 12 lots, or portions of lots, included in the rezoning, and a handful of these would change from an existing R4/C13 to an R4/C23. The remaining lots would change from an R5D/C13 to an R5D/C23. What we will demonstrate through the materials that follow is the appropriateness of this rezoning, both in terms of use and in terms of land use generally. And then, the entire applicant team, of course, is happy to answer any questions. Next slide. So Dr. Kantius acquired this building in 1990, so has had his medical laboratory here for over 30 years. Currently, there's a two-story commercial building here with roughly 4,000 square feet of floor area. The cellar and ground floor is a Use Group 6B ambulatory healthcare office, a standard medical office, which is used by Queens Hospital for their WIC program. The second story is where Dr. Kantius has his medical laboratory. This is a diagnostic laboratory, which samples tissues under microscopes to determine the presence of cancerous cells. Importantly, there are no blood or infectious diseases present. Dr. Kantius has operated his medical laboratory here without incident for over 30 years. This rezoning would facilitate the legalization of this existing Use Group 9A medical research laboratory on the second story. As we page through to the next slide, which is the zoning map, you can see that this is an area where there are commercial overlay districts, C13 districts immediately around the project area, and C2 districts. You can see there's a C22 district to the north of the project area, those five blocks, roughly three blocks to the north of us. So, C2 zoning is something which is common in the city, which is known in this area, but here specifically is appropriate for several reasons. If we want to go to the next slide, we'll see that the area in question along Union Turnpike and 164th St. involves the lots that are within the dotted area. The red highlighted area is the project site. The next slide, which is the land use area map, really demonstrates why the C2 is appropriate here. You've got 164th St. and Union Turnpike, which at this intersection is the intersection of two major thoroughfares, Union Turnpike at 100 feet and 164th St. at 120 feet. So, commercial use is abound on these two avenues. And just with regards to the C1 and C2 overlays generally, both of these overlay districts are considered to be appropriate for large thoroughfares, and really for commercial use in general. So, most of the city-sponsored area-wide rezonings, the East Harlem rezoning, the Gowanus rezoning, the NoHoSo rezoning, commercial overlay districts now, as a matter of habit by city planning, are usually C2 districts. The reason for that is that there's a marginal additional number of uses which are permitted in the C2, which are not permitted in the C1. So first of all, some of these uses, much like the medical laboratory here, allow for uses that are complementary to other C1 uses, like a doctor's office, which you would utilize the services of Dr. Kantius. And also generally, we want to be able to encourage our commercial users. Obviously, there's a large challenge with regards to retail in the city generally right now, and so C2 overlay districts are seen as giving just a little bit more opportunity for a wider range of users. And so, that is the case with the C2 overlay district here. Next slide. So the next slide, and the slides that follow it, provide for photos of the property itself. You can see Queens Hospital occupying the ground floor of the property. You can see the adjacent three-story commercial structure. Importantly to note, there is no work that would be part of this application. It would merely be for a legalization of that Use Group 9 use. Use Group 9 is not permitted as a right in a C1, is permitted as a right in a C2. So, the bulk of the buildings here does not change. The total floor area, which may be used for commercial, does not change. That's still a 1FAR for commercial. Merely what changes here is the opportunity for a slight expansion in some of these uses. The slides that follow are the plans. You can just forward to the plans, which demonstrate the various uses within the building. There's a one-story commercial, sorry, two-story commercial building with a rather large rear yard. The ground floor cellar of the building, the next slide, has office and accessory space for the Queens Hospital WIC program. The plan after that is the first floor plan, which includes other accessory space and their examination rooms. And the second story includes Dr. Kantius' labs and accessory space. The remaining plans are merely the roof plans and other sections and elevations. The photo, again, is the last page on this presentation. The building, again, would stay and remain as it is, but would merely allow Dr. Kantius to proceed with using that without incident and allow for him to update his CFO. And just to note, because there was discussion at the Community Board and in front of other agencies, Dr. Kantius had proceeded to use this for 30 years without incident, with the understanding that, his understanding was that it was able to be used as medical space, medical office space on the ground floor here, Use Group 6, medical laboratory space above is Use Group 9. So, he's been receiving appropriate permits from, for example, Fire Department for storage of materials at the site and the proper utilization of the site. When it became clear to Fire Department that this was, however, a non-conforming use, after discussion, they determined that he should indeed go through a rezoning process to allow for this minor change. So, with that, we think that from a land use perspective, as well as for this site, that the rezoning is appropriate, and the entire applicant team is happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Richard. Just one question. You kind of briefly spoke about the Community Board. Queens Community Board 8 had concerns about hazardous waste created by this existing business. Could you clarify on the record what kind of waste is generated by this business and how you responded to the Community Board's concerns?
Sure. I would start by just really talking briefly about our response to the Community Board concerns, and then perhaps would have Kevin Williams briefly just discuss some of the concerns about hazardous materials, which were not well-founded. The first thing to note is that what we're seeking here is a Use Group 9 medical laboratory, which is important to note, because Use Group 9 medical laboratories are specifically enumerated in the zoning resolution as not permitting any hazardous materials or waste. The actual terminology in the zoning resolution is "medical laboratories for research or testing", and I'm skipping over some of the words that don't apply, "not involving any danger of fire or explosion, nor offensive noise, vibrations, smoke, or other particulate matter, odorous matter, heat, humidity, glare, or other objectionable effects." So, the lack of any objectionable effects at this site and the lack of any hazardous materials is what makes it appropriate for Use Group 9. So, part of the discussion around the Community Board was that, and part of it was, I think that there were some misplaced concerns over the nature of the permitting and what was required here. I would actually defer to Kevin briefly to address that, as he's better versed in that than I.
Thank you. Kevin Williams from Equity Environmental, we prepared the environmental assessment statement, and subsequent to the Community Board meeting, we provided materials to the Brooklyn, or sorry, the Queensborough President's Office and City Planning Commission related to the Envirofacts database report that was prepared or presented by a member of the community at the Community Board, and they misinterpreted that as being an EPA permit. Envirofacts simply is a repository that's collected by EPA that identifies all sort of permitting activity that's been present on a site, and there are innumerable sites in this area, things like dry cleaners, things like material production shops, the hospital that's half a block, two blocks away from the site, and any type of facility that disposes of medical waste in general. And that's what we're talking about, are the bonding agents and the tissue samples that are provided by hospitals for detection of, or evaluation by the doctor's histopathology lab. So none of this material poses a danger. It simply indicates that this waste is being carted by a professionally licensed carting facility that's licensed through the State Department of Health, which is why this record came into the Envirofacts database, shows that it's like, that the doctor's license is current and has been so during its entire term, over two decades since this license came into effect, and they're subject to inspections. So this is merely about the tissue samples that, where the doctor goes and evaluates and determines whether cancer is present. And, you know, so that is the, you know, the long and short. Happy to answer any further questions. And that license and the Department of Health license is completely in compliance to date.
Thank you, Kevin. And is the applicant on the call? I would like to hear from him as well.
Sure, the applicant's on the call.
Dr. Kantius, I just hear about your relationship with the Community Board?
Dr. Kantius, can you talk about your relationship with the?
Yes, yes. Yes, I can. Please ask me the question.
So, I know that they have some concerns about your business. Do you have any prior relationships with the Community Board, working with them, or trying to have a conversation with them, addressing these concerns?
Well, the, my saying is, we, for the 33 years, we trying to comply with every law laid on us, as far as the Fire Department, as far as the Health Department, and as far as DEA, anybody who checked us never had problems with us. The, there was some presentation, then there was some summons or whatever. There was a gas station right next to us, which was probably that underground tanks were leaking, or whatever it is, DEA noticed it, and that's what they were referring to. But, when the issue was resolved, and the statement was done that our laboratory has nothing to do with that, but they're referring that to the statement which was done before the determination was made. We had no problems whatsoever. The neighborhood just liked it because they had a local laboratory, and we issue reports on 250 patients every single day. And we just, we do good for the society, and we're good for people who work inside for years and years and years. And we're just, you know, proud of what we do, and we do it within the legal means and human relation means.
Thank you, Doctor. I appreciate your work in the community and appreciate your willingness to work with the community as well. Does any of my colleagues have any questions? And just want to state for the record, we've been joined by Councilmember Carr and Councilmember Juan. Councilmember Shulman?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm still trying to figure out, because usually the Borough President actually follows the Community Board, but in this case, it says that the Borough President is for it, and the Community Board voted unanimously against it, so can that be? So can that be explained?
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Scholman. So, you know, the, the vote at the community board was a split vote. So it was, I believe, 12 in favor, 19 against. And I think much of the discussion at the community board was around the issues that Kevin touched upon with the EPA and whether or not there were actually any environmental violations at the site. Once that was described in more detail to the Queensborough president, much in the same manner as Kevin described today, I think the borough president's understanding was twofold. The first was that there were no environmental concerns, particularly given that the use group that sought at the site is one that's permitted in a C2 zoning district, which again is a district which appears across the city. And the second was from a land use perspective generally, I think that there was a recognition that these, this particular intersection, the 120-foot by 100-foot street system here was more than, was, you know, more than able to accommodate the minor change in zoning that was proposed. So we were happy to get the Queensborough president voting in favor. There were many members of the community board who have a lot of experience in land use, who voted in favor of this. And I think that that was determining, is one of the determining factors as well. So again, we were sorry that the community board, you know, that it was a split vote like that, but we were happy the Queensborough president saw that the, the environmental concerns were not sufficient to derail what would otherwise be meritorious application from an applicant who has been in the community for over three decades. And importantly, as is recognized by many of the community board members, has employed numerous individuals from the surrounding community board and Queens generally. Dr. Cantius is an amazing teacher, as well as a skilled diagnostician. And there's many people who came up as interns in his facility who later went on to become lab technicians and other medical technicians at surrounding doctors' offices and hospitals. So this is someone who does good, and, and so we're glad the Queensborough president recognized that, and we hope to do well by him as well.
Mr. Bell, thank you. I just want to ask the committee counsel, it says here that it was unanimous against. Is that not correct?
There could be potentially an error in the briefing. Let me just double check with staff.
Just to, to assist, I'm looking at the community board borough recommendation dated June 8th, 2022, in favor, 12 against 19, abstaining zero.
Councilmember, we'll, we'll double check.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And we've, just want to state for the record, we've been joined by Councilmember Hanif. Are there any more, any more councilmembers with questions for this panel? There being no questions for this applicant panel is now excused. Counselor, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on 79-18, 164th Street, proposed remotely or in person?
Chair, there are no members of the public remotely. And if there are any members in person, please come forward so we can have you fill out a slip. It doesn't look like there are any, so we can go ahead and close the hearing.
There being no members of the public who wish to testify on the preconsiders LU relating to Ulyss number C 220414 ZMQ relating to the 79-18, 164th Street rezoning proposal. The public hearing is now closed, and the item is laid over. To continue with today's meeting, I will now open the public hearing on preconsiders LU's related to Ulyss number C 220169 ZMQ and N 220170 ZRQ relating to the 40th-25th Crescent Street rezoning proposal in Councilmember Juan's district in Queens. This applicant, this application seeks a zoning map amendment to rezone existing M1-2/R5B and an M1-2/R5D zoning district to an M1-2/R6A zoning district and a relating zoning text amendment to map an MIH program area. For anyone wishing to testify on this item remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that by visiting the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone in person who wants to testify, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. Councilmember Juan, do you have any remarks for this project? Okay, no problem. Counsel, please call the first panel for this item.
So I'm going to call the applicant panel. If you want to start joining the, the chair and the podium over here, or the desks, rather. So if I'm missing any of you, just let me know. I have Dan Eggers, apologies if I mispronounce names, Deirdre Carson, Henry Rosenwach, Noah Bernstein, Jean Kaufman, and that's it. Did I get all of you? Good. So if all of you can please, oh, sorry, Chair. Your call.
That's all right. Counsel, please administer the affirmation.
So now, can you guys please raise your right hand and answer the following question? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the subcommittee and in your answers to all councilmember questions?
I do.
Thank you. For the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, I'll just ask that you please reinstate your name for the record and your organization for the record. You may begin.
Good morning. Dan Eggers, Land Use Attorney at Greenberg Char. Good to be here live and in person. Good morning, Chair Riley and committee members and Councilmember Juan. I'm representing Crescent Street Associates LLC, the owner of 40-25 Crescent Street. I'm joined here by Henry Rosenwach, representing ownership, and my colleague Deirdre Carson. Also here to answer any questions you may have is Jean Kaufman from Jean Kaufman Architect and Noah Bernstein from AKRF. We're very excited to discuss with you what's truly a mixed-use project in every sense of the word. The owners and affiliate of the Rosenwach Group, which is a major supplier and servicer of water storage tanks and towers, cooling products and services to the tri-state area, and they've been doing that for decades. The property was previously a fabrication site for the Rosenwachs. Before changing traffic patterns around Queens Plaza, adversely affected the ability of tractor-trailers to access the site. Their water tower and tank business has been operating in New York City, in fact, since the late 1800s. The rezoning would in part allow their business to retain a presence here in Long Island City and retain jobs while allowing its operations at this property to occupy a more modern facility. Next, please. So this is an application, as was stated, for a rezoning from an M12R5B and M12R5D districts to an M12R6A district within the existing Dutch Kill Sub-District of the Special Long Island City Mixed-Use District. A mandatory inclusionary housing area would also be mapped over the proposed rezoned area. These actions would facilitate a new seven-story mixed-use building with about 175,000 square feet of floor area at 40-25 Crescent Street. The application received favorable recommendations from both Community Board One and the Borough President. The project is vested under the Prior Affordable New York Program, and per the program's requirements, the applicant intends to enter into an agreement with 32BJ to utilize union building service personnel for the project. Next, please. 40-25 Crescent is on the block bounded by 40th and 41st Avenues and Crescent Street and 27th Street. Next, please. Specifically, the proposed rezoned area would be the portion of this block 100 feet north of 41st Avenue and 80 feet south of 40th Avenue, which is now an M12R5B and M12R5D districts. The rezoning would rezone this area to an M12R6A district, extending the existing M12R6A district that's immediately south of this area to north within 80 feet of 40th Avenue. This district would continue to serve as a transition with regard to density and height from the higher densities blocks, higher density blocks to the south to the adjacent M12R5B and M12R5D districts. In addition to 40-25 Crescent Street, six smaller lots are also part of the proposed rezoned area. Four of these are used for vehicle storage. One is a three-story residential building, and one has a nine-story hotel, as are small portions of six other lots. Next, please. Here's an aerial image of the site and the proposed rezoned area. Next, please. The site is an approximately 45,000-square-foot lot with about 255 feet of frontage on Crescent and 200 feet of frontage on 27th. The site now has four one-story buildings used as office space for Orkin, the exterminating company, a facility where the owner stores and tests its water storage and cooling tower products, and a parking lot. As you'll hear, this, the existing light industrial use will be remaining on the property as part of a mixed-use development. For a land use rationale, we believe the project is consistent with the specific purposes of the Special Long Island City Mixed-Use District to permit development of residential, commercial, and light manufacturing uses and encourage the development of affordable housing. Next, please. The existing conditions are shown in these street-level photos of the site, which I'll ask staff to move through. Next, please. This is from 27th Street. Next, please. More along 27th Street. Next, please. Thank you. Here's the original site plan of the proposed development. As you can see, there will be commercial, manufacturing, and residential uses with a courtyard. Next, please. In response to the community's concerns regarding loading and deliveries on Crescent Street, which has a bike lane, we've revised the illustrative site plan to include a requested loading zone on 27th Street and a breezeway from the 27th Street portion of the building to the Crescent Street portion of the building. Signs would instruct deliveries to the building be made on 27th Street, and deliveries for residents in the Crescent Street portion would be brought through the breezeway, which is shown in orange on the plan. Through Department of City Planning staff, the applicant team has been in touch with DOT to work on ways to ensure that vehicular and bike traffic is maintained during construction. And we understand through City Planning staff that DOT does not currently have any major concerns about the building in relation to that bike lane after opening. Next, please. There would be a total of approximately 175,000 square feet of floor area, that's 3.9 FAR, of which 5,000 square feet would be in commercial use, 12,000 square feet would be in manufacturing, and 158,000 square feet, that's 3.5 FAR, would be residential. Here with MIH, 3.6 FAR is permitted, with an additional 0.4 FAR allowed for designated industrial uses, which would amount to a total of 4 FAR. The commercial use would be either office or local retail space, depending on market conditions. And the manufacturing use would be light industrial use by the owner's pipe fitting operations. So this action would, among other things, preserve industrial jobs. Of the residential, approximately 39,500 square feet would be permanently affordable under mandatory inclusionary housing option one, which, as you know, requires at least 25% of the residential floor area be affordable to households not exceeding 60% AMI, of which 10% cannot exceed 40% AMI. So this translates to 233 units approximately, of which 60 would be permanently affordable. The original intended unit mix was about 19% two and three bedrooms, but in response to the community board's request for a greater number of larger units, currently the intended unit mix has increased to 40% two and three bedrooms. So the building would have a 65-foot, six-story base height, then set back 15 feet from each street, and have a total height of 75 feet and seven stories, which is less than 85 feet and the eight stories permitted. A portion fronting on Crescent would be 55 feet, within 25 feet of the adjacent M12R5D district. 118 required parking spaces would be in the cellar. Of these, 88 would be for the residence, and 30 would be for the commercial and manufacturing use, 18 for the commercial, 12 for the manufacturing. And access to the building's parking would be from 27th Street, and loading for the manufacturing use would be on Crescent. Next, please. Here is a land use diagram showing the proposed building in context. Next, please. And here we see images of the proposed building from the street. As you can see, the new building would create a nearly continuous street wall along each of these sites, two frontages. Next, please. And next, please. And here are illustrative renderings of the building showing our design concept of the project. And again, we thank you for your time. Good to be here, and we welcome your questions.
Thank you so much. I just have a few questions, and I'm going to pass to the Councilmember Juan. The borough president and the Queen's Community Board One were recommending more affordability for this project. I think you spoke upon that. Including sending aside 10% of the affordable units to persons making 30% of the AMI. Could you confirm whether that recommendation was adopted? If not, why not?
We're currently studying that, that request, and we're looking to see whether or not that would work with the project's economics. We've certainly heard that request, and we understand the councilmember's desire for more and deeper affordability, and it's something that we're taking very seriously, and we're taking a very hard look at.
Are there any plans to allocate some of the space within the development to community facility spaces?
I'll, I'll let Henry Rosenwach, representing ownership, speak to that.
No problem.
Good to meet everyone.
How you doing, Henry?
So so far, we're proposing the rezoning. We haven't solidified any allocation on the first floor as to retail, community space, manufact, excuse me, manufacturing for ourselves. So as we get forward into the project, we're going to definitely review with your insight on how to allocate that properly for the community.
I mean, with the community's insight. Hopefully, community facility spaces are always important, especially with new development. So just to keep that in mind. Thank you, Henry. I appreciate that answer. Just two more questions. The borough president also recommended that the applicant redesign the courtyard to allow for public access. Are there any plans to redesign the building to allow access to the courtyard?
Is this working? Hi, I'm Deirdre Carson, also shareholder at Greenberg Trowrick. The, we are in a district in which we are required to maintain a street wall. So customarily, public space is provided in the front of a building, and that's done mostly for security reasons, so that it can be policed. It can be accessed. It doesn't have to be controlled. Whereas if you were to put it inside a courtyard in the rear where there's security issues, it'd be very difficult to control. You, you wouldn't want to have a security guard at the street trying to decide who gets to come in and who doesn't. It would just not be a tenable situation. And it's a private area. It is, you know, this is a backyard, and we don't require people who have backyards in private homes to open them up to the public. This functions the same way. That's its function under the zoning resolution. So we are thinking about ways to, we've, we've talked internally about ways to try and provide something at the front, but does present a zoning challenge because of the street wall requirements. And we have also talked about the prospect of making a donation to an appropriate entity or fund that can do some capital work on a, a public open space or recreational space. There aren't, not, I confess, after looking at the map, there are not a lot in close proximity to this facility. We've looked at a, at a playground that's about four, four blocks to the north, and there is a park that's over on the other side of the, I believe it's the Queensbridge, Queensbridge Houses. There's a waterfront park. But those are the options we're looking at. The, the use of the courtyard is, is very, very difficult from management, managing security and privacy. I mean, people's bedrooms are right, right there. And, you know, you'd have to have a long, narrow court, a long, narrow alleyway through the building 50 feet deep, very difficult to police and secure. So it doesn't make a lot of design and planning sense.
What resilient and sustainable building features are your team committed to incorporate into this building?
So on that question, Chair, I would turn it over to Jean Kaufman, the project architect, who can speak to that better than, than I can.
Yes, he's just going to have to be sworn in.
He was sworn in, but I, I think he needs to approach the desk so that he can be using the mic as he speaks.
Hi, Jean Kaufman, architect. So we've been looking at primarily the roof scape of this project. It's a lot of roof area for both green roof. We've also considered and looked at solar, but we're, we're working on to see if there's a way to integrate either or both of those into the space. That's the, the largest expanse where I think sustainability can be addressed in a, in a significant way. And of course, we always consider what materials be used in the project. So when it goes to the facade or any of the other materials that are being incorporated in the project.
Thank you, Jean. I believe that's all the questions I have. I will now turn it over to Councilmember Juan to ask her questions. Councilmember Juan?
Thank you. Good morning. It's good to see you all. Thank you for being here. I'm not sure if you know the neighborhood very well, if you lived there, because I used to live literally a block away from this proposed site. I think it is a good idea to make sure that we are utilizing the empty lot and the Orkin spa. space that has remained empty for many years. But I am disheartened to hear the lack of commitment for affordability, and the way that you're speaking about security for the courtyard makes me feel that, or it is perceived by me, that you have apprehension about the community itself. Is it because you are in the surrounding area of six emergency shelters for folks who are unhoused currently? Or is it because you're within a two-block radius of Queensbridge Houses, or a four-block radius of Ravenswood Houses, both NICA's? So I'm not sure what the implication that was for in terms of security. The point of the Borough President asking for public space is because they want to make sure that it's public to the immediate project area's community to use.
I understand the desire to provide public space, but it is not customary in this city to put public space on the interior of an enclosed space that functions as a rear yard. And that is because people's bedrooms and living rooms are immediately proximate to that space, and it is intended to be and designed to be private space historically, from a planning perspective. And that is why, in the city of New York, we have requirements very often to provide public space, open space, but we put it on the street where, first of all, access is easier, and there's a policing capability, because even in the best of circumstances, in the best parts of this town, there are circumstances that can exist or occur where, you know, I mean, young kids going out for a night on the town have too much to drink at a bar, and they end up being raucous. That's not a commentary on them being undesirable people, it's just a fact of life that these things happen with a crowded urban environment. So we... from a planning perspective, we try to put the public uses on the street, close to the street, not in the interior of a building. We do, and then that's to be distinguished from the prospect of providing community facility space, which would be available for users in the community. It is... it is just a fact that we have a street wall requirement here, or else we might be able to consider putting some public space in the front of the building, but that is a planning requirement.
Okay, and I have a few questions for you. For the community center, could you consider... you had mentioned that you would be willing to make a private investment into existing community centers. Ravenswood Community Center at the NICA in a mile radius from there has been in shambles. They have plumbing issues, they have mold, and they need investment. Would you be willing to work with them, to make an investment into the NICA's community center?
I'm not going to say yes or no, I'm only going to say we can look into it. The problem with these... with that kind of donation is that it's very hard to make a targeted donation that actually ends up getting spent exactly on the thing you want it to be spent on, when it goes to a large governmental organization. If it's possible to do something like that, I think that's something that the applicant would certainly consider.
Right across the street from your proposed site, we currently have an emergency shelter for migrant and refugees, as well as two other shelters within two-block radius from there, and five other shelters within four blocks from there. Would you be willing to host a community space for the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs to have some sort of navigation center or migrant welcome center in your building?
I think it's a great idea. Henry Rosenwach, part of the applicant team, partner of Crescent Street Associates. We'll take it under advisement as we start developing the building. Right now, we're in the very early stages of creating this project. Right now, we're just trying to get the rezoning accomplished, and then we can develop and mold the clay more as time proceeds.
Okay, thank you. And could you provide the proposed income bands for the affordable units and the bedroom mix again, for the project overall? Because we were hoping that by now you would have taken into consideration what Donovan Richards, the Borough President, had requested.
Sure. So the preliminary unit mix now is 4%, I'm sorry, 40% two- and three-bedrooms, with the remainder split between studios and one-bedrooms. And again, the original preliminary unit mix was 19% two- and three-bedrooms, which was increased as a result of the community board's request. In terms of the AMI bands, they've not yet been selected, but pursuant to MIH Option One, there's a requirement that there's a band constituting 10% of the total residential floor area that cannot exceed 40% AMI. So we're locked into that as a basis of MIH Option One.
I understand that you are still molding the project, but can I hear a commitment from you for affordable units above the minimum required by the requested zoning for MIH Option One for this project?
This is always a difficult question, because it turns on economics, and it's, you know, the... when these MIH options were designed, they were designed after economists were engaged to do an economic analysis. One of the factors that plays very strongly in deciding how much affordability can be provided and still make the project viable is whether there will be a 421A tax program or an equivalent, and right now, there is none. And that may result, in fact, in many projects that are planned never getting built at all, because rental projects in the city of New York have not fared well since I've lived here in the early '70s without tax subsidy. So, you know, we're looking at it, and I think Mr. Eggers mentioned the consideration of the Borough President's request for units at 30%, but we haven't completed an analysis to determine whether that will be economically possible. To both reduce the income levels and increase the floor area devoted to economic use, particularly without tax subsidy, is a difficult proposition, but we'll continue to study it.
This is the most transit-rich part of Queens. Did you consider any additional action to reduce the amount of required residential parking for the development?
So we... that did not come up in the discussions with the community board or the hearing with the Borough President. It did come up in a discussion with your office, and it's something that we are open to considering. You know, there's... as I'm sure you know, councilmember, there's some people in that area that want more parking, some people want less parking, but it's something that we're certainly open to looking into. And that action, as I'm sure you know, it would be a... it would have to be a separate ULP action, a special permit that would waive or reduce the residential parking. There's no action available that would eliminate or reduce the requirement for the non-residential parking, and based on the floor area that's proposed, there would be 30 spaces required for the non-residential. So there would have to be at least some parking in the project regardless. But again, this has come up relatively recently, and it's something that we're certainly open to looking into and discussing further.
Do you intend to target the Borough President's recommended goals for the MWBE hiring?
So in fact, the applicant's general contractor, Skami, has extensive experience regarding the participation of MWBEs and LBEs, and in fact, Skami has committed to ownership to use commercially reasonable efforts to pursue the hiring and prioritize retaining MWBEs as subcontractors and vendors with a goal to target 30% participation in the project. So in short, yes.
Thank you. I just... and my last question is about Crescent Street. So on the community board, Crescent Street is one of the busiest bike lanes that we have funneling into Queensbridge. On page 12, you're saying that the parking garage would be accessed from the 27th Street, and loading will be accessed from Crescent Street? I thought the community board had asked to not have loading on Crescent Street, because you would directly be on the bike lane.
The main... one of the primary concerns of the community board was, in fact, residential, you know, drop-offs and deliveries, and how that would impact or interact with the bike lane on Crescent. So what we've done as... or what we've proposed to do in consultation with DOT is to have a dedicated loading zone for drop-offs and deliveries to the building on 27th. As for the applicant's loading for their operations, the way that the building has been designed currently, it's... it wouldn't really work to put that on 27th. The loading would need to be on Crescent, but I think it's important to mention that the operations, the pipe fitting and storage, they're not expecting a high volume of trucks and deliveries through that loading on Crescent. And as mentioned, through Department of City Planning staff, there's been consultation with DOT, and DOT has not expressed concern regarding operation of the building and operation of the bike lane, should the project be constructed as proposed.
We cannot have any obstruction of the bike lane at any point of the project.
We have sat down with Jean's office to review moving the loading zone on Crescent to 27th Street, and so we're developing the plans to see if it all fits logistically in the plot of land that we have.
Okay, and looking on page 16 in the rendering, it looks like there's a garage door on both 27th and Crescent.
That rendering was from... how many PowerPoints?
Okay, so it's an outdated rendering. I just wanted to make sure.
It's outdated rendering.
Because even if you look now, you would be obstructing the jersey barriers from the bike lane in order to enter that garage.
There are entrances and exits on Crescent Street for businesses on both sides, in the areas where those businesses continue to exist, and it is important to remember that this is a business district. It's an M1 district. So... and DOT does not regard an occasional entryway as an unbearable impediment to the maintenance of the bike lane. People may have to slow down and wait for a truck to go in and out, but this is not a business that's going to have a massive amount of trucking. It's not a business that's going to be having loads go in and out all day. They'll be concentrated in the early hours of the day, and then at the end of the day, there'll be a few returning trips. So but you may be talking about three to five trips a day.
Early morning and late of the day.
Later, but not peak, not peak, not peak business hours.
That's when rush hour is for both cars and for cyclists.
Rush hour is different for people who are doing white-collar jobs than it is for people who are doing blue-collar jobs. So people who are leaving early, very early in the morning, between 6:30 and 7:30, don't represent necessarily the peak business time for people who are taking a bicycle ride to catch... to go to an office.
Cyclists are not all white-collar job workers who are going to an office. There are delivery workers.
That's true, but I'm saying there's a distribution of the uses throughout this period of time. It is not all one group of people traveling at one period of time.
This request about the loading on Crescent, possibly moving to 27th, was very recent, but we are looking at that very seriously, and I believe we're going to be able to move that to 27th Street.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Wong. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for the applicant panel? Councilmember Shulman?
It's a little bit of a comment as opposed to a question. I just... I want to support my colleague, Councilmember Wong, in terms of asking for an increase in affordable units, because I represent Central Queens, District 29, which as far as tells, we go Park and Q Gardens, which is basically a middle-class area. I've had a couple of developments there now, big ones, where initially, they said economically they couldn't do it, and then at the end, they did. So I'd really like to employ you to please take a hard look and try to do that, because there's a dearth of affordable housing in Queens and throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shulman. Councilmember Bhatra?
I just have a design question for Mr. Kaufman. The brown material at the top, is that like sheet... like just a sheet of metal, or is it like brick?
We're looking at making the facade brick the full height of the street wall. The idea on the top in that rendering was to somehow accommodate what's the varying scale in neighborhood, where there's some lower buildings and some taller ones. Currently, we're looking at something that's a little bit more, what can I say, upscale in its look, and we certainly would like to achieve that.
What is that material, though, gentlemen? Because I see it used a lot, and in my opinion, it's just not very nice-looking. It's like a brown metal.
You're talking about steel, rusted steel?
No. Yeah.
I think that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, it looks like metal in the rendering. That's what you're referring to. Yeah. Is that what it is? Yeah, but currently, I think we're looking to change that and to have a more of a pattern in the brick itself, rather than differentiating the top floor in such a dark color. It's, you know, not necessarily even specifically to this project, I'm just kind of asking, as a New Yorker, why... because you do so many buildings, it's just not as nice as it could be, in my opinion. I think something...
You're talking about the rusted steel look?
Rusted steel.
Yeah, that's Wink of Double Dam, I think, was the one who sort of promoted that early on, and it became very shishi to do. So... but I don't think that's going to happen in this project.
We will take it out. Well, don't take it out because I asked. It's not my project. I just, you know, thank you for indulging me, colleagues. I just, you know, there's so many buildings going up that I think could be nicer in New York.
We haven't finalized the design.
Oh, we got an applause there, yeah. I mean, these are buildings that are going to be here for 100 years or more, so I think we need to elevate the materials we use across the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bhatra. Counsel, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this item?
No members of the public to testify on this item online, and if anyone's here in person, please come forward. Doesn't look like anyone's here, Chair, so we can close the hearing.
Okay. This panel is excused.
Thank you all.
There being no members of the public who wish to testify on this, we consider LUs related to ULPs, number C220169ZMQ and N220170ZRQ relating to the 40th-25 Crescent Street rezoning proposal. The public hearing is now closed, and the items are laid over. To continue with today's meeting, I will now open the public hearing on LUs 110, 111, and 112 relating to the Ninth Street rezoning proposal in Councilmember Hanee's district in Brooklyn. This application seeks a zoning map amendment to rezone an existing M2-1 zoning district to an M1-4/4... excuse me, slash R7A zoning district, a related zoning text amendment to map an MIH program area, and a special permit to reduce off-street parking. For anyone wishing to testify on this item remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants-at-arms to prepare and submit a speaker's card. Councilmember Hanee?
Thank you, Chair O'Reilly, and I just want to start off by thanking the community in my district that has continued to engage very thoughtfully with my office on this application, and of course, I want to also thank the applicant, good to see you, Richie, who agreed to meet with our community members and take our concerns, my office's, the residents' concerns, into account. So thank you for that. And I continue to have deep concerns around this application. As you know, I've been vocal about these with both the applicant and our community at large. I've heard from dozens of community members about the need for deeper affordability, which meets the needs of the current housing crisis, as well as continuing to authorize new development in light of unaddressed environmental concerns related to flooding and stormwater management in our community. I've also heard from the industrial business community about their needs and concerns being proximate to residential rezonings while the IBZ itself remains unprotected. I take their concerns very seriously, and with every land use decision, I'm going to continue to voice my concerns around solutions that bring deeper affordability to Goanis and take into account the needs of our industrial businesses without adding additional strain to our infrastructure. So I know this has been a couple of hard weeks and months. This was at my table at the start of my term, and we've come a long way... This was at my table at the start of my term and we've come a long way in many, many tough conversations. And I'm looking forward to continued conversation, which I know will be just as difficult, to get to a project that really meets the needs of Gowanus, the future of Gowanus, and our neighbors as we continue to welcome asylum seekers and recognize just what a deep hole we're in in addressing the affordability crisis and housing crisis in our city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Hanif. Counsel, can you please call the first panel for this item?
The panel for this item, and you guys can take your seats here at the table, is Paul Prolux and Tony Daniels.
Counsel, can you please administer the affirmation?
Panelists, can you please raise your right hand and answer the following question? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the subcommittee and in your answers to all council member questions?
Thank you. For the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, I'll just ask that you please reinstate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
My name is Paul Prue. I'm with the law firm Carter, Ledger, and Milburn. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, the Angelina Gatto Trust. We're joined by Richie Gatto, who, to observe the proceedings, who is the trustee of the trust, and Tony Daniels from Cycle Architecture. So, to start with, thank you, Councilmember, for your leadership on this and for facilitating the conversations that we've had. And we look forward to the continued discussion. This morning, we had a great call with your staff and the Fifth Avenue Committee, and we also look forward to continuing that discussion with them as well as with HPD and, and others. So, to brief the committee here, I'd like to go through our presentation. This is for a block front on Ninth Street in Gowanus in Brooklyn. It's just below the eighty-two block rezoning that occurred and was in front of you months ago. We've been patiently waiting while that project was resolved and approved. And so now we are proposing something just like it for a small portion of Ninth Street. The rezoning area is a four-hundred-and-twenty-five-by-one-hundred-foot area between Second and Third Avenues on Ninth Street. Oh, sorry, I'm advancing my own slides, but I need to advance two slides, please. Thank you. Next slide, please. This is the rezoning area. And the area that we're proposing to develop, you see here in this slide, it's an eighty-two foot by a hundred-foot area that's unimproved at the moment. It's mostly asphalt and is used to park cars. It last had a building, or an improvement on it, in the nineteen-seventies, which was demolished because of the age of the building. So, it's been operated essentially as a parking lot since then. Next slide, please. So, the rezoning area, it's, it's unique in many ways. But the obvious way that's shown by this slide, and one of the things that informs our land use rationale, is the fact that it's primarily residential. There's one lot that exists that is improved with a commercial building, but otherwise, aside from our lot, everything is residential. So, we're proposing to map a M14 R7A, which would allow residential uses in this area that's already residential. And to give you an idea of what the neighborhood looks like, next slide, please. I'll run through a couple of photos showing the rezoning area. Next slide, please. The structure to the south of us there that you see is the trestle, which informs sort of the context of the neighborhood and the height. Next slide, please. And again, our site, the small house you see on the upper left-hand corner is part of our zoning lot and it is the home that Angelina Gatto lived in until her death a few years ago. And that's on Eighth Street to the rear of our property. Next slide, please. Again, you see the trestle. And the council member had mentioned our proximity to the IBZ, which you see here on this map. If you look closely at the very northern edge of it, you'll see the red area, which is our proposed rezoning area. We are not in the IBZ, to be very clear, but we are adjacent to it. And so the needs of the IBZ and the concerns of, for the manufacturing district have been front and present during the ULP review. You'll notice, though, that our site, like others nearby, represents some jagged teeth that, that are not mapped within the IBZ. Next slide, please. The IBZ has gone through several public meetings in connection with the rezoning that the city progressed last year. And part of that resulted in a vision plan with several recommendations for land use in the city, in, in the IBZ. Next slide, please. One of those represents the jagged teeth that I had mentioned, which you see here on this slide. And this recommendation that resulted from the community outreach and study that the city published shows that in the final paragraph there, if you can read the text, that the recommendation for the clusters of residential around Third and Ninth Street to be legalized and also suggested that modest increases would be appropriate. So, following that vision plan guidance, we have filed this application. And the application is for the following items, which you heard a moment ago, for a zoning map amendment to map the M14 R7A, for a mandatory inclusionary housing. Sorry, next slide, please. Mapped alongside of it for the four-hundred-and-twenty-five-by-one-hundred-foot area and for a waiver for all the accessory parking that would result from the building. Next slide, please. So, again, with the land use rationale for the site, we're following the city's guidance in the vision plan and also recent approvals that occurred on Twelfth Street and Third Avenue that mapped the same density and uses that we're promoting, aside from the fact that we're also proposing certain manufacturing uses that are not included in that application. So, there's precedent for this, exactly the same as what we're proposing. Another precedent is in the city's eighty-two block rezoning, next slide, on Union Street. Union Street is another cross canal corridor. The Gowanus Canal is one of the largest physical presences in the neighborhood. And Union and Third and Ninth are the cross canal corridors. So, like Ninth, Union Street is mapped with an R7A, approved recently. Next slide, please. Part of the thing that informed our request for a special permit for the parking is because this is a transit-rich corridor that we're proposing to build on. Ninth Street is a bus route, a bike route, a truck route. It's between two subway stations, one at Fourth Avenue for the F and G and the R, and then one at Smith with the F and G, and we're equidistant between those two. The proposed parking waiver would also eliminate the need for a curb cut here and eliminate the conflict that would result from vehicles pulling in across the bike path. So, this is the building that we are proposing to build and we are joined, joined by Tony Daniels, who will go through the building with you.
All right, next slide. I think I need to turn this on. So, good, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Tony Daniels, the principal of Cycle Architecture and Planning. Thank you for the opportunity to, to make this presentation. Our office is at the forefront of designing for the environment in, in New York City. We have received numerous grants and awards from NYSER, the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority. We are working on pilot retrofit and electrification projects at Ravenswood Houses for, for NYCHA. We are committed in our practice to, to designing environmentally responsible buildings. And we know that any project that is built today has to be essentially ready for net zero or actually be net zero in order for the state to meet its CLCPA goals and for the city to meet its, its own environmental goals. You know, the, the business-as-usual building that is not net zero-ready is, is no longer a viable option, option for, for us in, in our practice. And you'll, you'll notice that the building that we're proposing, it's not a, it's not a big glass building. We have proposed a building that has, you know, punched windows because it's going to be a very well-insulated building so that it can be fully electrified with no fossil fuels on site. The, the, the building also, you'll, you'll see, has a lot of green, you know, plants shown on the roof and that is a response to some specific concerns about, about stormwater management on the site. My office was in Gowanus for nine years, there, at the corner of Third Avenue and Third Street. We lived through Sandy. We, we understand the, you know, the condition of the, of the sewers in this neighborhood as they run down the hill from Park Slope into the, into the canal. We, we understand. We, we, when we, when we ride, when we ride our bicycles by, you know, a, a site on Sixth Avenue that has the street torn up, we understand. We understand what is going on because the infrastructure there is, 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 is weak. So, we've designed a building that has the potential to actually retain some stormwater on site through, you know, these, these roof gardens at both the upper roof and in, in the back, there's a, a lower roof over the one-story proposed commercial portion. So, the, the building, of course, would be designed in accordance with the city's unified stormwater regulations that went into effect last February. And we would, we, we can actually increase the buffer size to, to lessen the, the load on storm source during peak, peak flow events like heavy rainstorms. And I just want to note that this would be an upgrade in, in terms of the, the flood performance of the site today. It is vacant, but it is mostly paved. So, now, storm, it just, stormwater lands and it just goes into the street, basically. So, we very much look forward to coordinating this design. We're excited about a potential partnership with Fifth Avenue Committee, you know, who's been a stalwart for affordability in the neighborhood. And I, I think that's, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Tony. If you could advance the next slide. I'd just like to point out that we've requested MIH option one here, but we are certainly open to the council members' feedback on that in this area, that, this four-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot-by-one-hundred-foot area that would be mapped with MIH. I would also point out that you may hear from the public regarding the displacement of existing stabilized apartments. I'd like to point out that stabilized rents are only applicable to buildings in excess of six units. And so there's only one building within this four-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot area that has more than six units. And we've been in touch with that owner, who has represented hearsay, but that they have only one stabilized unit in that building. So, while there is potentially going to be new development to replace the buildings that are there now over time, naturally, there would not be the displacement of any stabilized units, and, except for maybe one. And this would, of, of course, map the MIH, which would replace those units with a percentage of affordability for not just our site, but for the others within the four-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot area. Furthermore, I wanted to point out that this neighborhood, these jagged teeth that I had mentioned before, exist as manufacturing districts with residential uses because of a historic anomaly. In nineteen sixty-one, the city mapped the zoning map with restrictions, MRC. Prior to that, there were a lot of unrestricted districts, including this one. And by mapping M here, they prohibited the residential uses that exist there now from being replaced or enlarged or anything. They're considered grandfathered. In nineteen seventy-three, the city, noticing that there were a lot of these residential uses in this manufacturing district and acknowledging the restrictions that that posed on improvements and enlargements, they went and moved the zoning line from Park Slope and Fourth, Fourth Avenue all the way to Third Avenue and encompassed like another ten thousand homes. We were not included in that. We were excluded from that. This area was excluded from that and remains M2 to this day. But I would like to point out that the existing residents are primarily a group of people who have been excluded from ownership in Brooklyn by accidents of history like this, including redlining and, and other things. So, this is not going to, many of these units are owner-occupied and have been in families for generations, including Richie's. And we have letters that we've submitted for the record that, from many of these units, from many of these homeowners within our rezoning area, expressing their support. So, I just wanted to point that out. And then also, for the record, for your information, the community board gave us a very positive endorsement with thirty-one votes in favor and six against. So, we were very pleased to have their endorsement and their support for the affordable housing that this represents, which was a major reason for their votes. And look forward to, you know, accomplishing those goals. Next slide, please. The concerns that you may hear from the manufacturing industrial retention community relate to the fact that our rezoning area is on the border of the, of the IBZ. But currently, this is all residential. These people that live there exist hand-in-hand with the manufacturing uses nearby. And we're proposing simply to enlarge that. And by building a new building there, we're also going to be adding an eight-thousand-square-foot commercial space, which will allow a transition to the manufacturing district and will activate this portion of the street, which is currently limited to essentially stoops and residential uses. So, we think that is supportive of the MIH as opposed to a problem. Next slide, please. The reason for the special permit parking waiver is, of course, the curb cut. But also, if you see here, this would be for a parking garage on the site or for accessory parking in the building. This is using a very efficient mechanical parking system. But as you can see, it would limit our eight-thousand-square-foot retail space to less than half of that, three thousand six hundred and forty-nine it shows here, once you've allocated the amount of space for either a system like this or ramps. And here, next slide, please. And then here is just a, a final rendering to show what an activated ground floor and the building may look like. So, with that, I'd like to be open for your questions and, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Just a few questions, then I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Hanif. The first question is, what do you plan to do with the site if the application is not approved?
I think that the as-of-right uses are fairly limited here. But the sort of parking garage scenario is certainly one of the things that we would consider. The problem with the, I think, with the options available under the existing M2-1 is that you can build a single story, but there's not a whole lot of rent associated with that. The rents are very low for conforming uses. And to go up would require quite a bit of an investment in terms of elevators and, you know, that kind of thing in order to, to get another floor for very little rent. So, I, I think we've, the best use that we've identified as-of-right would be probably a parking system for a hundred and fifty cars permitted by zoning.
Okay. Do you have plans for the commercial space? And have you had any conversations about what type of use would be the most beneficial or identify potential tenants?
We have not identified any potential tenants. We think it's too early to really be serious about that. We started this process exploring a fresh supermarket program with city planning. But this area is a very wealthy neighborhood that doesn't qualify under the restrictions for fresh. So, we hit a dead end there. But our client, Mr. Gatto, has a history in meat. He was a butcher for many years at a, a local supermarket and has applied that trade throughout the city. So, some of the feedback we heard from the Southwest Brooklyn Industrial Development Corporation was that they'd like to see maker retail. So, I think that if we were to generalize, it would be some sort of food-related maker retail. And if we were to be more specific at this time, we'd say that, you know, some sort of butcher shop. But we're certainly open to feedback from the community as we proceed. But we're certainly open to feedback from the community as we proceed. And look forward to identifying something that works and that provides a reasonable return.
Thank you, Paul. In addition to onsite stormwater management, have you considered installing rain gardens in the public right of way to help mitigate local flooding issues?
Yes.
You have? Okay. Sounds good. I'm gonna yield my time to Councilmember Hanif to ask her questions. Councilmember Hanif?
Thank you, Chair. Okay, so building off of the question Chair Riley asked, I'll begin with your considerations for this site absent this rezoning. So to just build on, on Chair Riley's question. How many years has the site been in Richie Gatto's possession? And would love to know what's prevented Richie from building a parking lot in those years?
Well, I think that the, the exact date of the purchase of the property was, I, I don't have. But the buildings that were there were demolished by his family in the seventies. And a portion of the site was paved for parking. The thing that has changed is that the senior, you know, the, the prior generation has passed, passed on. And so now Richie has, as the trustee, has control of the property and is prepared to build something in order to maximize its use as a fiduciary. He has obligations to the trust and I think it's those obligations that he's following in deciding to do something here.
And, I mean, it would be good to get a commitment to not make this site, absent of this rezoning, a parking lot.
Well, that, that'd be hard to do. There's not a whole lot of other uses, as I explained, that we would feel comfortable building on. I think that's, you know, in a way, you know, a worst case scenario. But, and certainly not a promise. But it would also be difficult to say that we would not explore the limited rights that we have as of right.
And then I spoke about the housing crisis. We're in a dire situation in our city. And then with the recent Gowanus neighborhood rezoning, we anticipate up to 5,000 new market rate housing units in the neighborhood in the coming years. Could you share how this development will address our community's need for affordable housing? And how will you ensure that the types of units can accommodate the high needs of affordable units for families?
Well, again, we're open to mapping whatever inclusionary housing option you think is best. As, you know, as it is in your discretion. We think that whichever option it will be, will be a, a great addition to the neighborhood's supply of affordable housing. So it's not just our site, it's the 425 foot by 100 foot area that will be developed only with residential uses that are affordable if it's developed with residential uses. To the extent that the M I H requires it. So, you know, we think that this proposal is doing a service to the neighborhood by providing that, by mapping that. And then our site specifically will not only meet the M I H requirements, but as we've discussed, there may be something else that we can do there. And we're looking forward to exploring those options with you. We're not in a position to commit to anything yet. And there are, as you know, and we appreciate your openness to the conversations we've had about, you know, what is feasible and what is sustainable from an economics perspective. And, you know, we're not affordable housing developers, but I think the idea that perhaps with some city subsidy, there might be a way to build something that's larger than just an M I H building. You know, we're open to and Mr. Gatto has expressed a, a commitment to. So we look, look forward to exploring that at greater detail.
Yeah, I'm grateful that we've, we've had a good faith relationship in the process of this application. And would really appreciate a, a commitment to deeper affordability than required under M I H. Because M I H is flawed. It's simply not getting us to where we need to be to address the affordability crisis in our city.
If I just might add, you heard from the prior applicant, you know, the 421A is a real loss. And, you know, we appreciate your looking to, you know, figure out solutions that kind of account for that loss. But again, 421A was sort of the, M I H, when it was passed, was the maximum that the city thought was possible with 421A. So now we don't have 421A and we're still in a position where we're, you know, we're required to do M I H, we're glad to do M I H. But to go beyond is, gets complicated quickly, so.
Right. And I think that's what we're coming up against, this complicated nature of building housing. I mean, I was very upfront at the start of our conversations that like the biggest priority for me is building new housing. But ensuring deep affordability for a district like mine where we need more. We could use more affordable housing in, in my district. And so the conversations have been tough because the city by default is not honoring this process of building deeper affordable housing in, in, in our city.
If I could just respond to that, I think that the idea of mapping our seven A here, you know, with the manufacturing complement. It increases the density, right? And so it addresses the fact that there's a supply issue. So whether it's stabilized, whether it's stabilized, whether it's M I H, whether it's voluntary inclusionary. Or whether it's just market rate apartments in a portion of the neighborhood where the rents aren't that high to begin with. You know, you're, you're addressing the problem by, by doing this, so.
So some folks have raised concerns that continuing to add residential uses in close proximity to the I B Z. Could adversely impact the ability of industrial businesses to operate. How do you respond to these concerns around there being more residents, more noise complaints and difficulty for trucks? You mentioned the truck route earlier.
Yeah. Well, you know, the traffic issues I, I don't want to get into. But we're doing what we can with this proposal by proposing the waiver of accessory parking. The fact is though, that in this area, residential and manufacturing uses exist side by side and have for many years. And there are several areas where that Gowanus mix of uses, you know, exist and, you know, in harmony. So we don't think that by adding to the density of this residential area that we're going to cause any sort of specific problem. I think that there are exceptions and there will be growing pains. And, you know, if you're operating something that's sound sensitive, certainly you're going to have an issue with any construction at the site. But we're not, you know, whether it's an as of right or the proposal, there, you know, there's going to be construction at the site. So I think that what we've proposed is something that, you know, complements the I B Z with, you know, an active ground floor. That, you know, that hopefully will be something that helps make the transition from the residential uses to the east and to the manufacturing uses to the west. So we think it's a great sort of puzzle piece to fit in at this location and, and speaks to all those things.
I'm grateful that the Chair asked about green infrastructure. I want to add to that. Could you speak more about what kinds of green infrastructure would increase resiliency through the new construction on your site? Blue roofs, suspended pavement. I know you talked about fully electrified building, no fossil fuel on site. Would love to learn a little bit more, given that the Ninth Street site is under the size threshold for Chapter 19 requirements under the Unified Stormwater Rule. Which mean, which would mean that the site won't be required to include green infrastructure by the city.
Sure. Well, I, I guess we can focus on, on, on water infrastructure here. And, and that is, you know, there is a, there is a high water table in this area and it is prone to flooding. So, you know, doing a, a sort of buried retention type system is probably not, probably not in the cards for this site. So we have, we have to, we have to find uses for water that are, you know, above, above. We have to, we have to, anything we retain, we have to use onsite. So for instance, we, we can use it as part of an irrigation system for a green roof. You know, or we can, or, or we can detain it in a, in a tank. And what, what we would propose on this property is to, to, to build a, you know, a substantially sized detention tank. To, to buffer the, you know, the, the, the stormwater at times of peak flows. And, you know, that's a, a detailed engineering calculation that you, you know, that you do. You know, you, there are, you know, standards for the length and intensity of storms. And, you know, it, you, you input that and it will tell you how much, in terms of gallons, you have to detain onsite. We can, we can exceed that, you know, because of the perceived problem and detain more and buffer more. And, and then, you know, mention was made about, you know, providing, you know, at, at the, at the street. To, you know, to provide a, you know, rain gardens and to, you know, to, to use, you know, green infrastructure along the street is, is, as well. That's, that's contributory. It's not on our site, but certainly within the neighborhood, it would, it would help. So, yeah, that, those are, those are water infrastructure. So to summarize, retention onsite for, for, for green roofs and irrigation, detention, you know, with, with an increased buffer size. And then, you know, street side stormwater infrastructure, you know, rain gardens.
And then you had mentioned plants on the roof. Is the roof a, a green roof?
Yes, the roof, the roof will, the roof will be largely a green roof. And, and just looking at the rendering, we were not showing like, you know, like a, you know, a, the, the licheny stuff. We were showing an intense green roof that has, you know, that would be structurally, we're building from scratch so we can, you know, size the roof to carry the loads for a, a more intensive green roof.
Got it. Thank you. Will you provide an analysis of the total volume of combined sewage overflow expected to be generated from your site after the building is constructed?
Do you mean like a, a report on?
Yeah.
Building well function?
Is that possible? Or an estimation of the volume of C S O the site?
I think we would, we'd have to do a unified stormwater calculation anyways to document compliance with the requirements, right? So to do some sort of post-construction analysis seems.
Yeah, I mean, we, I guess if we're, if we, if we can make a, a number of assumptions about the building and, and about the site. Like if we assume that there's going to be no, you know, no sub, no subs, no subgrade.
Post-construction, then?
Right, right. So we, so we can just assume, if, if we make a number of assumptions, I think we can come up with an estimate.
You're asking for it to be delivered now or delivered post-construction?
I mean, an estimation would be helpful. Is that something that you all could work on with maybe our support?
Can you do that?
I mean, this is a very vulnerable area. We just had a couple of days of torrential.
Yeah.
Well, what didn't, what could, shouldn't have affected Gowanus in the way that it did. So this is just something that would be good to have on hand.
I think we should, we should probably, we'll, we'll take a look, is the answer. I would, I would also like to just point out from, you know, an existing condition to a proposed condition analysis. That the site is currently about 75% asphalt, right? So that's mostly going to runoff. And what we're proposing to do would obviously, you know, be better than that with the retention that Tony just described. So in terms of like a, a net change, you know, it would be definitely a, an improvement. I would also like to point out that, you know, there's a little bit of confusion, it seems like, between hydrostatic pressure and stormwater runoff. You know, we're, we're talking about flooding that comes up through pipes into people's basements when there's a storm event, right? But in addition to that, you know, there are issues with basements leaking and, and that sort of thing, I believe. And that relates more to the hydrostatic pressure in the ground after a rainstorm, which builds up because it's a, a high water table. We're not in a flood zone, but we're very close to a flood zone. So it's a high water table. And so that sort of event, you know, here would, with the runoff, it, it goes into the combined sewer, but it also goes into the ground and creates problems there too. So again, from a net perspective, existing condition is bad, the proposal would be good. And we'll continue the discussion about how we might document that in advance of the conclusion of U L R P.
Thank you. And then outside of the analysis or estimation of a total volume of C S O. How do you plan to ensure that your site will not add additional C S O to the sewer shed? Or that it will help to reduce net C S Os in the canal?
Sure. Well, there, there is a combined sewer. We, we don't have separate storm and sanitary sewers that we can connect, connect to. So, you know, we, we will have to connect to the combined sewer. And the, the measures that I referenced before, the intensive green roof and a, you know, a buffered detention tank. Will reduce storm flows during peak events. And, you know, we can, we can size that, you know, that, that tank so that, you know, it can accommodate the, you know, the flows from, you know, longer duration storms that are more intense. So, so, you know, that would, you know, that would reduce the burden on the, you know, on, on the sewer at, at a time when there are, you know, C S Os, C S O events. Because we're not contributing as much.
Okay. That is all that I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanif. There being no question, no more questions for this applicant panel, you are now excused.
Thank you.
Counselor, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on Ninth Street proposal in person or remotely?
Chair, we do have a few members of the public that are, have been patiently waiting remotely. And we have a couple here in, to testify in person. I think we'll do those first, but I'm going to run my announcements for all of them. So for members of the public here to testify, please note that witnesses will generally be called in panels of four. If you are a member of the public signed up to testify on the proposal, please stand by when you hear your name being called and prepare to speak when the Chair or I say that you may begin. Please also note that once all panels in your group have completed their testimony remotely, you will be removed from the meeting as a group. And the next group of speakers will be introduced. Once removed, participants may continue to view the live stream broadcast of this hearing on the council website. And as I stated earlier, for some reason, you can stay for the duration of the hearing. You can submit your testimony to land use testimony, testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you.
Members of the public, we'll be giving two minutes to speak. Please do not begin until the sergeant at arms has started the clock. We will now hear from Brian McAllister and Brad Vogel.
And again, if anyone else is here to testify in person, just see one of the sergeants to fill out a slip.
I'm sorry, you're, Brian? Thank you, Brian.
Do we have Brad here? Oh, you could, yeah, you can, you just both come up at the same time.
Brian, you could begin as soon as the sergeant starts the clock.
Time has begun.
Thank you. My name is Brian McAllister. And my family and I are owners and residents at 120 and 122 Eighth Street. Immediately adjacent to the rezoned area or the area proposed to be rezoned. I'm also a tenant at 69 Second Avenue, Brooklyn, which is a creative studio space. We oppose the rezoning of these properties because the rezoning will cause, in our belief, a net reduction in affordable housing in the neighborhood. And will cause significant adverse impacts to the community. To begin, any modification of the current zoning should be part of a community-driven U L R P. That conforms with the spirit of the May 2021 Gowanus Industrial Business Zone Vision Plan, which was created by the Department of City Planning. The neighborhood is asking for a pre-application meeting on a new U L R P for the entire neighborhood with the Department of City Planning. This community, community-driven U L R P. This community-driven U L R will provide for sustainable zoning that supports industrial, creative space, and real, sustainable, affordable housing in the neighborhood. At its heart, this proposal calls for a spot rezoning for a nine-story complex that is out of character and would undermine the future of manufacturing, creative, and industrial opportunities in the surrounding Gowanus neighborhood. The rezoning is not the product of community input. As was noted by Genia Belafonte in the September 2 New York Times, hundreds of community members have petitioned against this development, and the developers have not adopted the recommendations made in the approval process to date. The rezoning will. Thank you.
You could continue.
The rezoning will result in a net reduction in affordable housing. According to the 2020 Rent Guidelines Board's registration file, 169 Ninth Street and 147 Ninth Street are rent stabilized. Rezoning these properties for luxury housing and the properties around them will ultimately cause them to be replaced with more luxury housing and no adequate replacement. The property will have a negative environmental impact on the neighborhood. This has been exhaustively detailed in the Planet A Strategies Review of the Environmental Assessment Statement, which was filed with the City Planning Commission on August 31, 2022. I refer you to that document. And the property will have significant environmental impact, or the, this proposed redevelopment will have significant environmental impact. Ultimately, it's unfair to rezone part of our block to the benefit of one developer over the objection and to the detriment of other stakeholders in the neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Brian. Brad, you may begin.
Thank you. My name is Brad Vogel, and I live in Gowanus. I live on Ninth Street. I live on the block in question, and I live in the area that is slated to be rezoned. And I'm really grateful for a chance to speak directly to you here. I know there's only two councilmembers at the table at the moment, but I really do want to make the case because not all of my neighbors who live in this area be, to be rezoned, if this passes, are able to be here today. And it is a very diverse little block with lots of different people living there. And one thing that kept coming up with counsel to, to the developer is that this proposal is just like the main Gowanus rezoning that was recently passed and foisted upon the Gowanus neighborhood. I just want to say I find that to be bizarre logic. That has already happened. That is a huge, huge area that is causing mass demolition, displacement. I have friends and community members who have been, literally, they're just leaving the neighborhood, and it's a really sad thing. And that's what I want to bring up because I certainly stand to be displaced if this goes through. And a lot of other people do too. And it's not just the rent stabilized tenants. There are a whole bunch of other people living on this block. It's a real living block that has actual people on it. And I think that's really important. When you're pursuing affordable housing, which I certainly understand is, as an overarching goal for the city, you have to remember that there are actual people, not just statistical people that are out there that are working for, but like actual people who will be displaced for sure if this goes through. I do think it's also concerning as to what this will do to the manufacturing zoning. There's a reason this area was not included in the main rezoning because it serves as a buffer zone to make sure that some manufacturing capacity is actually retained in the IBZ. This block is zoned manufacturing, and these nonconforming fingers of residential use exist. But I don't think it makes sense to significantly expand the scope of that. I do think that there should be some parts of the city that are actually prioritized for manufacturing. We certainly have seen during the pandemic that having a manufacturing base is crucial here in the city. So again, I hope that the committee will oppose this rezoning. I thank Councilmember Hanif for coming out to listen to community members literally in the street about this. And I really hope that this is not passed. This needs to be part of a more comprehensive view. The IBZ visioning plan that was mentioned earlier is a significantly more comprehensive view of this area where sort of residential and manufacturing are cheek by jowl. And if you're going to do a rezoning, it should not be basically gussied up spot zonings like this one. It should be a more comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. This, Councilmember, do you have questions for this panel?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. This panel's excuse. Counsel, can we call any members online who wish to testify?
Yes, we have quite a few of you, so I'm going to be calling you in panels of four. So the first panel is going to be Maureen Coats, and I'm sorry I'm mispronouncing names, Paul Basile, Beth Morrow, and Martin, Martin B C. Maureen Coats, first one to testify.
Time has begun.
Maureen, you may begin. Can we please unmute Maureen?
Yes.
You may begin, Maureen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My name is Maureen Coats. I'm a licensed attorney in the state of New York, a former federal executive, and currently work as a sustainability consultant. I'm here today as an environmental expert on behalf of residents of 122 Eighth Street, located behind the proposed rezoning. I urge the council to reject the application for the reasons I'll describe and set forth in the fuller report you heard referenced, and that will be submitted to the committee along with testimony from Hiller, P.C. This application must be rejected because no environmental impact statement was prepared. A rezoning requires an E I S if it has the potential for even one significant adverse environmental impact, considering all reasonably related and cumulative impacts, including simultaneous or subsequent actions in long-range plans of which the action under consideration is a part. This rezoning proposal requires an E I S for long-term and cumulative effects as part of two long-range plans, the IBZ you have referenced and the Housing New York 2.0 Plan for M I H. It's also related to the Gowanus Neighborhood Plan that has been discussed. The applicant has admitted and acknowledged in the E I S and testimony that this rezoning is part of these long-range plans. For example, the project includes M I H affordable units, and applicant's counsel told the City Planning Commission, quote, "The IBZ report recommends as city policy to upzone and make conforming the residential uses that exist in the manufacturing districts adjoining the IBZ. If approved, the project would generate adverse impacts that are long-term and cumulative with other IBZ and M I H actions in multiple impact categories such as transportation, but particularly water and sewage infrastructure." The applicant's architect testified that Ninth Street, quote, "has one sewer, and capacity is a known issue with storm sewers." In fact, the 87 dwelling units proposed would add significant.
Time has expired.
Two sentences to what is actually a combined sewer, not a storm sewer. And the area residents are victims of continued city violations of a 2016 sewer backup compliance order issued by EPA. New York City knowingly continues to use area basements as sewer retention tanks, creating significant adverse impacts, applicant acknowledges, and that requires an E I S. Applicant does, has asserted the possibility of mitigation to adverse CSO impacts using water detention features like the rain gardens you heard about, but these are verbal and are not binding. Therefore, in the absence of an E I S and a finding statement that mandates this needed mitigation, the claims are arbitrary and unenforceable. The environmental harms are too important to be ignored, and the application should be rejected unless an E I S.
Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you.
I just want to state for the record, we've been joined by Councilmember Moya.
Thank you, Chair. The next speaker on this panel is Paul Basile, but I, I understand from our intake team there are some issues promoting you. If you're there, Paul, can you unmute? If not, I'm going to call on right now Beth Morrow, and we'll come back to Paul. Beth, Beth?
Hello. I am a, an owner at 122 Eighth Street, and I, I, I'm not sure how many people in the room have, have not already been to this site, but I thought I'd speak to some of the issues that are very specific logistical and practical reasons that wouldn't be apparent unless you live or, or are very familiar with the neighborhood, why it is not the right place for high, high-density residential development. First, the surrounding area has higher-density tall buildings on avenues, Third and Fourth Avenues in particular, which are very wide blocks. Streets like Ninth Street are narrow, and they are zoned for modest, low-density buildings. So specifically Ninth Street, where the Gatto location is located, is 34, 34 feet wide. Fifth Avenue, Third Avenue is 55 feet wide, and Fourth Avenue is 85 feet wide. That's part of the reason that the, the tall buildings are going on the avenues, not on the streets. In comparison, Ninth Street, as you go up above Third Avenue, gets wider. And yet, even in that context, the buildings that are being built there right now, and that street there is 66 feet wide, are being held to height restrictions. A new housing, residential building going in there is six stories, and there's a school building going in that is being held to four stories, even despite the significant public use. It's also a pinch point because this, because the street's narrow, there's a lot of backup, and it's the truck and ambulance route. It's important to note that while the Gatto team is proposing for themselves to change the zoning rules, including on Eighth Street relative to his own house there, the other residents of Eighth Street are burdened by a very intense zoning restriction that doesn't even allow modification to, to put a deck or a garden shed. And it is, it seems incredibly unfair to allow an exemption for Mr. Gatto and not somehow address the neighborhood as a whole.
I'm, I'm sorry, Beth, we have a, a lot more speakers, and I'm going to have to cut you short, but you could submit the rest of your testimony to us online.
I did submit.
Thank you.
So we're going to try Paul Basile again to see if he's around. Paul, are you there? In the meantime, let's hear from Martin B C.
Hi, yeah, I'm Martin B C. You can hear me? Yeah, I'm Martin B C from B C Studio in the Old American Can Factory, which is six blocks from this rezoning, and I've been doing music recording there since 1979. So I'd like to start with the flooding, and I've seen quite a bit, but really, it's mostly in the left, in the last 11 years. Irene, Sandy, Henri, and Ida, two of those superstorms were catastrophic. Ida actually found someone, unfortunately, dead in the canal. There was a 100-year storm, and Ida was supposedly a 200-year storm. And it's shocking really that there's no E I S here, considering the EPA has already stated that the city is not in compliance and will not be in compliance until the big sewage retention, retention tanks will be built, which I think is like in 2030 or 2032. And there's already, and it's already controversial, there's thousands of units slated to be built in the next few coming years. And it's also near a superfund site. There's still carcinogenic coal tar, rainbow sheen stuff floating visibly from the Ninth Street Bridge on the water like all the time, and air monitor alerts just across the canal on the other side. So moving to displacement of businesses, the this potential displacement of the entire Old American Can Factory is well documented in the E I S for the main rezoning of Gowanus. So that's like 200 culture workers and also the community that those workers support. I support a vast community of, of musicians. It is in my, my interest and our, that community's interest, if we're displaced, to be displaced into a robust and hopefully reasonably affordable industrial and commercial zone. And that's really crucial to the city. So we need to look at the affordability of these commercial zones hand and foot with
Time has expired.
The affordability of housing. So right now, the commercial rents have already skyrocketed just with the main rezoning of the 80, 82 square blocks. So I'm quite concerned. I wouldn't be able to stay in the neighborhood, and then I lose the clientele, and I can't support that community if I'm displaced, which is slated for maybe potentially two and a half years from now. So I really hope this, this proposal goes down. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Martin. All right, we're going to try Paul. Paul, you may begin if you can hear us.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you. You may begin. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Esteemed city council members, my name is Paul Basile, president and founder of the Gowanus Alliance. I am also a property owner, business owner, and a community board member. As leader and policymakers, your actions here today will have consequences to a vulnerable group in the community. Our manufacturing members are struggling to grow and remain vital job and service providers. The remaining manufacturing area in this project, where this project exists, was promised many things during the previous massive rezoning, which resulted in a loss of huge manufacturing area with the de Blasio-Gowanus rezoning. We appreciated the outreach and communication with then-councilperson Brad Lander, who held a strong promise to help find a plan for the rezoning and the remaining area. From that discussion with many stakeholders, the Gowanus Alliance helped develop the IBZ Vision Plan, which despite its name, included the areas surrounding the IBZ and the area in this application. We are grateful to our current councilperson, Shannon Hanif, for her continued outreach and her promise to help us find balanced and sustainable growth. Unfortunately, this application does not support the vision plan nor the needs of our community. We believe the disparity in the recommendations from the community board after its land use committee disapproved this application, and with the borough president's conditional approval, it speaks volumes to the problem this application currently presents. And unless revisions are made to make a future plan viable, the future will be full of conflicts, and there will be inevitably displacement. Its out-of-scale density does not solve the affordable housing crisis, but rather further increases the conflict of uses that our manufacturing industrial community endure. This is a, this is a pivotal development in the future of manufacturing in our city. Its proximity to the IBZ and its direct negative impacts on the last active truck route on our northern border demands future discussion and the need to look at the entire area for a viable and the area.
Time has expired.
Thank you, Paul. You could submit the rest of your testimony to us online. Thank you. The next panel we're going to call up is, excuse me if I bop your name, Douglas Hanau, Jesse Lang, Elizabeth Denny's, and John Buckles. And we'll begin with Douglas Hanau.
Time has begun.
Okay, if we don't have Douglas, can we start with Elizabeth Denny?
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Denny, and I live not too far from Brooklyn City 6 in Flatbush, Brooklyn, where often people are being displaced when they are no longer able to live in this, in the neighborhoods that are served by Brooklyn Community District 6. I'm speaking today to urge you to vote in favor of the Ninth Street rezoning. My neighbors both nearby and my friends in City 6 and throughout Brooklyn and the city are all feeling the financial pressures from skyrocketing in rents as the city recovers from the pandemic, and building more housing is badly needed throughout the city, and the Ninth Street rezoning would provide 48 new homes with a portion affordable. The alternative of 150 parking spots won't help solve the housing crisis. Whiter and wealthier districts like Brooklyn City 6, which is 62% white and has a median income of $118,000, need to do their part to reduce displacement and residential racial segregation. And if additional housing units aren't built there, like I mentioned earlier, displacement will continue to push out into the poor residents into the, from the area into further other, other neighborhoods like Crown Heights and Flatbush, continuing displacement going on and on and on until people are no longer able to live in the city. It also sits at a number of under-capacity subway lines, making it an ideal location for folks to live in Gowanus without a car and still access jobs throughout the city. And it's really important in the face of climate change to create housing that isn't car-dependent like the applicant is trying to do. The alternative of 150 cars is the opposite of that good climate parking, uh, climate policy. And, you know, I really appreciate it that the applicant is trying to be really thoughtful about the really key bike route that I ride almost daily through on the Ninth Street bike lane. It's very thoughtful to reduce the conflicts by not having cars being pulling in and out in the bike lane. All the dangerous spots on that bike lane are where cars pull in and out mid-block like the CVS a few blocks away. This rezoning also has the hyper-local support of the Brooklyn Community Board 6 and support from Borough President Antonio Morenozo, making it a clear choice to vote yes on. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak, and I hope you consider the benefits of these 48 additional homes instead of 150 parking lots.
Thank you so much, Elizabeth. The next person we'll be asking to call is Jesse Lang.
Hi, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak today. My name is Jesse Lang, and I am speaking in support of this rezoning today. Um, I actually, uh, I don't, I no longer live in Brooklyn. I used to live in Brooklyn, but um unfortunately it was priced out of the borough. Uh, I would have liked to live in Gowanus actually, but unfortunately I was not able to find any housing that was affordable to me there, so uh I was forced to leave unfortunately. Uh, but I did bike past this site recently and um as I looked at the parking, I thought that it would be a pretty nice site for uh for housing instead of an empty lot or a parking garage or one of the other uses that um might be allowed. Uh, I am happy to see that both the community board and borough president are in support. Um, in fact, I was at the borough president hearing in support of this and at the time he mentions that we are in a housing crisis, not a parking crisis, which is something that I wholeheartedly agree with. Uh, and, you know, I also think that this site um and this rezoning application is a really wonderful compliment to the Gowanus neighborhood rezoning that will help to um continue to change out-of-state zoning and allow the neighborhood to um build according to the current needs, which is housing. Um, it will also update a lot of infrastructure that it that I understand is badly needed. So I think that it's really something that could go very nicely hand-in-hand with the rezoning that was already passed for the entire neighborhood. Um, I would be happy to see deeper affordability, which I know that the council member is calling for, but I really would like to urge Councilmember Hanif to not kill this application over a uh demand that is perhaps not economic for the developer um because the as-of-right use, as we've heard, which me would mean that there would be zero housing, zero affordability, and continued outdated and polluting uses. So, you know, I really think that um I I know that Councilmember Hanif was calling for a commitment to not build parking here. But I I urge you to recommend um commit to not allowing it to be parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. The next person I'm gonna call on is John. John, you may begin.
Thank you very much. My name is John Buckholz. I am a uh single-family property owner in Brooklyn, where I've lived for most of my life since nineteen eighty-four. I have decades-long memories of this lot as an empty lot. Uh, uh, it's 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 never been anything else in my lifetime. And I want to commend the developers for uh responding to the crises that are confronting our city, both the gross housing crisis that is uh pushing displacement and pushing people like me and Jesse further out. And I also want to commend them for seeking to reduce uh auto use in a neighborhood at a site that's less than a thousand feet from two subway lines. We've heard a lot of commentary about displacement and I'm sensitive to it and my my only personal comment as someone who was displaced first in the neighborhood where I grew up and then more on Hill because my family got larger and there were zero units on Street Easy in two thousand and eighteen when I wanted to re-rent. Um, what displacement looks like in practice is with inadequate inventory, we don't have enough housing choice. And I know people are sensitive to buildings being built around them, but the reality of displacement in New York is much different. It's people like me who can no longer live in the neighborhoods they want to, then moving further out and and posing pressures on those people. So I would urge the council to consider how it's applying its thoughts about affordability to this project. The simple fact of adding inventory where there is none will serve as a moderator on price pressures. Adding inventory, adding neighbors is what New York City should be about. It's what I hope is available to my kids when they're old enough to choose where they want to live. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, John. The next uh person on this panel is Douglas Hanau. Douglas, if you can hear me, you may begin.
My name is Douglas Hanau. I've lived in Community Board Six for twenty-five years. I'm a single-family homeowner, raised my kids in Community Board Six. I wholeheartedly support this program. I'm thankful that it's being considered. I have lived in this district and seen every project up until the Gowanus rezoning rejected out of hand. This community needs more housing. My kids will inherit my house that I bought twenty-five years ago. I didn't, it wasn't because of sweat equity, it was luck. At that time, twenty-five years ago, you could buy a single-family home. If, you know, I grew up in a rent-stabilized apartment, didn't have a lot of money, I lucked out. People don't have that option now. We need to build more housing in Community Board Six. We are talking about zoning from nineteen sixty, when climate change was not even a thing. Nobody talked about it. The uh the idea that we're gonna hold to nineteen sixty zoning in two thousand and twenty-two with the climate crisis is outrageous. The fact that the Gowanus rezoning took ten years of dithering, of dithering and conversations and going nowhere just to get it approved. There won't be housing there for fifteen years. Do you know how many seniors who could have lived there have passed in that time? Do you know how many people have left the community and left New York City because they can't find a place to uh live? We cannot sit here and dither and wait for another project and for every single person in the community to weigh in. Let's pass it now. We'll pass, we'll build housing in Gowanus, we'll build more housing, we'll build housing in Soho. We need to build housing everywhere. It's a climate crisis. We need more housing. We need more solar. We need the kind.
Time has expired.
Amenities that the developer talked about. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your testimony. The next advocate, I'm just kidding. The next panel I'm gonna call is Jason Sakai, Catherine Crace, Ben Meskin, and Amanda Rouse. The first person I'm gonna call to speak is Jason Sakai. Jason, you may begin if you can hear me. I'm sorry if I misspelled your name.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Jason Sakai. I'm an attorney from the Hiller P C, a land use zoning and preservation law firm in the city. We represent residents who live at one twenty-one, twenty-two H Street in Brooklyn, which a button is directly behind the proposed rezoning area. These residents will be adversely affected by this application if it's approved. I speak today in strong opposition to the application. I note that the Land Use Committee uh of the C B Six rejected this application and the Brooklyn Borough President had many conditions for the project. Approving the application would represent bad public policy. It's it's merely a piecemeal proposal to rezone one portion of one side of one block for uh out of an entire neighborhood to benefit one developer. Um, and the neighborhood needs a broader rezoning, covering multiple blocks, not these one-off spot zonings that keep popping up. That's not urban planning. Luckily, the city has a vision plan, the two thousand and twenty-one plan, uh but this application is grossly inconsistent with it, contrary to what the applicant says. Vision plan focuses on business growth and industrial and commercial uses. As for residential uses, they must meet specific criteria, including be appropriate, match existing conditions, and only have modest, modest increases in density. That's not the case here. The developers trying to upzone to a high density from a low density. The existing buildings are one-to-three stories. They're trying to make it a nine-story building. The proposed plan should also be rejected because it would destroy the neighborhood character and displace current residents and businesses who want to be there, who currently afford to be to be there, but won't be able to in the future if this application is approved. Although some affordable housing units are being proposed, there's only twelve, twelve units of affordable housing that are being promised here out of a total of thirty-six at least market-rate units. We want the developer will generate millions in profits if this application is is granted. There are also serious environmental concerns and E I S.
Time has expired.
If it hasn't, you refer to uh Ms. Coats's environmental report and I also supplement my uh presentation with written testimony. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jason. Just for the record, I'm sorry if I'm cutting everyone off um at the time, but um there's another hearing that's supposed to take place uh right after, so I'm gonna be cutting everyone at two minutes. Um, and you can submit the rest of your testimony to us online. Thank you so much. Uh, the next person I'm gonna be calling on is Catherine Crace. Catherine, if you can hear me, you may begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, councilmembers. I'd like to start by thanking Councilmember Hanif for her leadership and commitment to community engagement. My name is Catherine Crace, lifelong Brooklynite, C B Six resident for over forty years. For nearly twenty years, I've lived behind the Gatto family's empty lot. I welcome responsible development of that lot along with rezoning Ninth Street to bring existing residential buildings into legal conformity. However, I, along with three hundred community members who've signed our petition, urge the city council to deny the current application unless there are significant changes. We want the applicant to address threats of a net loss of affordable housing, negative environmental impacts, and threats to the I B Z. While the proposal's focus is on developing an empty lot, the plan impacts a dozen other lots currently housing over a hundred residents. Rezoning those lots to seven A would economically incentivize destruction of those structures and result in displacements of residents like my friend Patrick, who walks his adorable chihuahua around the block every day. Many Ninth Street residents like Patrick come from multi-generational Puerto Rican and Dominican families, many of whom are only able to stay because they're either in rent-stabilized or other units with reasonable rents, especially compared to the luxury units popping up everywhere. Contrary to the applicant's assertion, there's more than one rent-stabilized building on the block and more than one rent-stabilized unit. The proposal area also includes a flood zone with major sewer issues. Though the Gatto lot's only adjacent to the current flood zone, the lot, the that lot is included in future flood zone calculations. I myself have lost many things due to flooding sewer backups as well as groundwater issues in my house behind the lot. The plan needs to address these issues and while the Gatto plan to try to address some of these issues are commendable, those plans aren't binding on the rest of the proposal area. So a pros- proposal of this scale should require more environmental study. Lastly, the proposal threatens the I B Z and while the proposal does not.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Sorry to cut you off, Catherine. Thank you so much. The next person that we're going to have is going to be Amanda Rouse. Amanda, if you can hear me, you may begin.
Hello, thank you for your time. Thanks for everyone um who's attending. I am a longtime resident of um Eighth Street up the hill from uh this Gowanus and um I'm now a business owner in Gowanus. Uh, I rent an office. And um so this year I have been trying to catch up on how people have been thinking about developing this area and I had no idea the scope of the eighty-plus block development rezoning plan. Um, I think within this time of, we have multiple crises in the city. Uh, we have a housing crisis, we have a health crisis, we have an education crisis. Um, we certainly have a climate crisis and um there's nothing in any of these um ways of thinking about Gowanus, which is a superfund site, which is a a a living waterway that's been abused for centuries. Um, I just don't think we've thought about the conversations we need to have, um, the way that we can use our collective um thinking to work together to think what actually makes sense for Gowanus, because once you start developing here, it's going to become something else. It's no longer gonna be what it is. Um, and that's pretty clear. It's pretty clear that the city's not thinking about our health in terms of monitoring the air quality, in terms of monitoring the water quality, um in terms of remediating the sewage issue that has continued to happen. Um, and so I'd really um urge the council to turn down this application and um consider that we need to be taking action in different ways, uh extremely different ways when we think about land use, water use. And I would like to have us start a conversation with indigenous people about land use in this city. And that's my time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Amanda. Uh, the next uh person to testify is gonna be Ben Meskin. Ben, if you can hear me, uh, you can unmute yourself and you may begin. Uh, it is star six to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Doug Meskin. I live two blocks away between Second and Third Avenue on Eleventh Street. I've lived there around the corner on Third Avenue since nineteen eighty-eight, almost thirty-four years. I knew Angelina Gatto, who was the mother of the applicant. I knew her husband Ralph Gatto. Um, being here for so long gives you a bit of a perspective. Ninth Street is the most crowded dense block in this neighborhood and for miles around. A very bad place to put much more on. These are nine-story buildings. Greatly concerned. We live here, those of us who live here, we we live in as best we can harmony with the industrial businesses. It's very hard. We try to get by. This would make this their their work and their existence here very precarious. The people who work in the I B Z in this area around here are overwhelmingly immigrants, predominantly Hispanic. Those jobs will disappear. More housing will disappear also because you build more market-rate housing, it adds more market-rate housing. The applicant testified that um, oh, there's only one rent-stabilized unit. There's no buildings of six or more. This is totally untrue. Um, one on this, in this area to be rezoned, one forty-three Ninth Street is six family, one forty-five Ninth Street is six family, one forty-seven Ninth Street is eight family, one sixty-nine, one sixty-nine Ninth Street is eight family. Checking other day and all this information that I was publicly available from city websites. Um, H P D says that three of these buildings, one forty-five Ninth Street, one forty-seven Ninth Street, and one sixty-nine Ninth Street have filed records with New York City D H C R at least once between nineteen ninety-three and today, and thus may each have one or more rent-stabilized units. A separate database from D H C R says that two of these buildings are currently rent-stabilized units, one forty-seven Ninth Street.
Time has expired.
Thank you, Ben. You could submit the rest of your testimony to us online.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. The next panel I will be calling is Andre Magnani and Benjamin Hayman. Andre, if you can hear me, please begin.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you for your time, council. Uh, my name is Andre Magnani and I come to you as one of the millions of Brooklyn renters and prospective owners who have been feeling the pressures of rising costs, constantly being displaced by the unaffordability of housing in New York. Uh, today you've heard the concerns of trucks, of sewage pipes, of a hundred fifty-part cars, but I believe your primary duty should be the residents of Brooklyn and whether they can afford to have a roof over their heads. Um, residents of Brooklyn in various income levels need a place to live first and foremost. Adding housing to C B Six, Brooklyn and N Y C is imperative to stop the cycle of displacement as New York attracts people of every back background and profession, while also blocking every development project that would house these new people. I'm raising a one-year-old daughter in Brooklyn and I hope that she's able to grow up here to welcome many new neighbors and that she can afford to stay here as long as she wishes. My ask of this council is to stop waiting for the perfect project, to approve this quickly and to go out and approve fifty more like this as soon as you can. The future of Brooklyn and I and whether people can afford to live here depends on it. And I give my time. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person I'm recalling is Benjamin Hayman.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Benjamin.
Hi, my name is Benjamin. I was a resident of this neighborhood for two years up until a month ago and I'm taking the time off this morning at one thirty-six P M from work to come and speak here, so I'll have to be brief. Um, I support this rezoning. Adding additional parking to this area is absurd. Expecting developers to not build exactly what we told them to build is absurd. This is zoned for this purpose. It should be zoned for housing. We should add housing to this area and we have the ability and the opportunity to do so. So to not do so seems absurd to me and I think it would be very difficult at one thirty-seven P M on a Thursday when most people are at work to get a representative survey. It's gonna be skewed negative and that's exactly uh what we're seeing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Benjamin. The last panel that we will be calling is Susan Young, Jose Medina, Frieda Lim, Paula Hibble. The first person I'll be calling is Susan Young. Susan, if you can hear me, please unmute yourself and you may begin.
I'm sorry, but um all of a sudden I can't read my uh text that I've written and prepared, I guess. Uh, I had moved into the Gowanus neighborhood after Hurricane Sandy and behind me you see the Marianos who are my neighbor who passed away during COVID from cancer. Um, they had rebuilt their house from scratch and um my mother had told them to buy the building and so there's and the Marat Linda was a very activist that I was able to participate in the CAG meetings and recently I've been hearing this um two incidents around Huntington space and uh it's appalling that um people have to go to the city government. and uh, it's appalling that um, people have to go to the city government and E P A to complain about the smells from the um, pilings that are being done by developers. A hundred forty, there are a hundred forty-four brown sites only to be two feet dug up whereas there is a hundred feet coal tar that's moved away from the Gowanus into residential areas and um, which um, are poisonous toxics and nothing's gonna be done about this move, migration of the coal tar. And um, and then plus, I'm surprised that like city councilman Brad Lander wants to move people of color in the highest toxic land on Ninth Avenue. Plus the school yard and everything that's like so polluted in the area and that, that won't be rectified because of the demand for
Time has expired?
Thank you, Susan. Uh, you could submit the rest of your testimony and if you wanted to rewrite that, you could submit it as well to us online, okay? Uh, the next one I'll be calling is Paula Hibble. Paula, if you can hear me, uh, excuse me, Paula Hibble, excuse me. If you can hear me, please unmute yourself. Uh, we can't hear you, Paula. Uh, we still cannot hear you. Uh, Paula, we still cannot hear you. Can you try to unmute yourself one more time? Okay, we cannot hear you, Paula. Um, if you're not able to testify, is it possible you could submit your testimony to us online, please? Thank you, Paula. Uh, we're just gonna do one last call to make sure that we got everybody. Uh, we lost Jose Medina and Frida Lim. Um, if you are there, uh, please unmute yourself. All right. There be no other members of the public who is to testify on L U's one-ten, one-eleven, and one-twelve relating to the Ninth Street rezoning proposal. The public hearing is now closed and items are laid over. That concludes today's business. I would like to thank the members of the public, my colleagues, subcommittee counsel, land use, and other council staff, and the sergeant-at-arms for participating in today's meeting. The meeting is hereby adjourned.